Okay, and, uh, Clark from Caldwell. Here. Here.
Here.
Here.
Here.
Here.
Yeah.
Here.
And I also wanted to, uh, welcome our two Aldermen, Alderman Smedley and Alderman Rosado. Alright, um, we start, uh, we usually start our meetings with a moment of meditation. Okay, and so we're gonna have, uh, welcome from Smalley School.
Good evening Superintendent Sarah, Board President Mr. Gray, Mr. Gay, all Board members, administrators, and public participants. Welcome to Smalley School. Ms. Philigno would like to apologize for her, for not being here tonight. She's homesick with the flu. It got her, it got her. I never thought anything would get her much, something else. However, she asked me to please congratulate all new Board members to their new positions. As a new school, we would like to share a slideshow to show what, to show you what Smalley is all about, and the great things that are happening in our schools, in our school. Mr. Cardiara, who is our esteemed teacher, our technology go-to person, and our unsung hero, has put together a quick presentation. But before we show you that, I would like you that, to know that to stay up to date with our up and coming events, please go to our Smalley, uh, Facebook page, and you'll know all the up and coming, uh, event. It's really, really nice, um, Facebook page. So, I hope you enjoy. Thank you.
Welcome to our lives. Here at Smalley, we make sure you're comfortable as soon as you step off the bus on the first day. We guide you in the right direction, and we wait for you with open arms. At Smalley, we set goals for you to simply be great. We take pride in honoring our students for their hard work, which is why we roll out a red carpet for our honorees. Our students also understand the importance of their commitment to be at school, because every day matters. Our teachers are working extremely hard to improve engaging centers and classrooms for our students, so that they can explore learning in a fun and creative way. Our youth art teachers work hand in hand with our students to reach their full potential and generate challenges in a real ideal way. Our P E teachers help students understand the importance of being physically fit. And our talented artists are constantly getting tips from our amazing art teachers. You can always see their artwork displayed around the building at all times. STEAM teachers are providing Smalley students with hands-on experiences that allow them to learn in a different way. Our students brainstorm ideas, collaborate with each other, and execute their ideas into making projects and inventions. Team building plays a major role in creating a positive environment and helps students successfully complete tasks. In STEAM, our students use the engineering design process in completing their projects. In turn, our students are feeling the success from completing a major task each trimester. We understand the importance of community, which is why we host several events for our students and their families. Holiday Day with breakfast, Truck or Treat Money, Sweetheart Dances, and a talent show, just to name a few. We also gave our students an awesome experience reviewing the Polar Express this winter. It's important that our students understand the meaning of giving back to the community. We placed peace flags around the city. We held dances, and participated in the Raise in the Heart to raise money for breast cancer research. Our students created toys for kittens in the animal shelter. And, we hosted Pasta with a Purpose Night to support one of our Smalley families. Our Facebook page keeps parents in the loop with everything going on at Smalley. With almost 500 followers and growing, our page allows parents to see everything, from photos of our events to upcoming important dates at our school. We also created an online read-aloud series in which parents can sit down with their children and watch us stand over reading a short story to them. We also have some amazing partnerships here at Smalley. From asthma cam, to Nutrition Detectives, to CCSU sports teams, and teacher interns. And coming soon, we are introducing our Smalley Explorations Clubs, which will be available to all of our students. These enrichment programs will cover a range of topics, from arts to sports and even media broadcasting. So, stay tuned. What I like about Smalley is how we put time, money, and thought into the funding by cleaning the school, putting a fun playground, and having a classroom for everything.
What I like about Smalley is how we, and our teachers, like how our teachers work hard to get us to learn, and how we work hard to impress them how we want.
What I like about Smalley is how big the school is, and how all the teachers help the students with their work.
When we behave ourselves, and we get Molly down and put it in the bed, and we get a flier on her, on her wall.
And Smalley, I like to make new friends, including the computer.
One thing I enjoy about Smalley is how friendly and caring the teachers are, and how you can tell that they really enjoy their jobs. Sometimes you can tell when teachers do not really care about their jobs, and that they only do it for the money. But you can tell the teachers at Smalley really love and enjoy their jobs and what they do.
What I like about Smalley is that, because a lot of other schools, if you make a mistake, they'll scream or yell at you and punish you. But at Smalley, they give you a second chance and tell you to work on it.
It's refreshing here. What I like about a lot of the teachers is that they help us a lot with work, and like that they care about us.
I like how they, how the staff and teachers respect us, and they let us work on projects together, like in STEAM.
One good thing about Smalley is new classes, new friends, and new teachers. My teacher is like nice, and I want to stay there for like, for the whole weekend.
I would just like to say, the bathrooms are through that door. It's separate, so they're available through that door.
Great. So we have, uh, one person signed up for public participation. Lorraine, the mic is yours.
Did you say Lorraine? Hi, I am Lorraine Parker Kimball. I am the mother of an eight-year-old at Vance Elementary School. Just to give a little history, I do have two older college graduate kids, and I have an eight-year-old at the elementary school. I'm here tonight, um, because I have an issue as a parent. We have many issues, but this one right here just won't go away from me. I'm a volunteer in the school, so I know firsthand how some of the classrooms run and how some of the things go. I want to first say that I love the way that our principal is doing what she does. I have no problem with the leadership. I've mentioned it before, and I'll say it again here openly. I think she is oftentimes overworked, but that could be her A-type personality. You know, she's always, always there, always at everything, but that's not why I'm here today. Um, my, it's not really a problem, but I'm going to present it as the problem when I first approached it. But I also have a resolution to it. And it has to do with special ed, but not so much special ed as it is my child who's not in special ed. I'm talking about the inclusion portion of the special ed in mainstream students. I thought it was a great idea when I read about it, heard about it years ago. Oh yeah, that's right, that's great. But I also thought that there was a para in the classroom. I didn't know that. I don't even know when they lost it, and, and if I had known that paras were coming out of the classroom, I would have come in as a citizen, not needing it for my kids, but I would have come in to say, "Parents, you need to stop that. You need a para in the classrooms." But I didn't have the choice. I didn't know I was gonna need to be back in the elementary school. My real concern is, when we did that, we didn't think it all the way through. And what I'm seeing now is, I'm seeing a classroom, many classrooms. My daughter's now in the third grade, so I've seen it for a while. There's too much traffic going on in her classroom, and I can only speak for the classes that I have seen, although I do see it amongst the building. Too much traffic. Students are going and coming, and coming and going. Teachers are calling for students, and, and I know they need the, I know special ed students need their special services. And I also know that it serves them to be included in an inclusional class. My concern is, one, they're losing precious minutes in the moving back and forth, that they could be in a specialized service. Two, it is highly disruptive to the main, to the, to the student who doesn't have services, my child, who happens to be nosy, as I mentioned. Anytime, anything moves, anytime, anything, she's on it. Now, she's a good student, so her grades are not totally affected, but I still see that as a disruption to her. My concern is, if I had a special needs or special ed child, and I felt that the school's purpose to serve all students, so that the special ed students can mainstream and fit into the classroom, and move easily with that classroom, and know what's going on, I don't think that's happening. I think for one, sometimes when they come back from the special services, they don't know what's going on. Now, we already know that they have special situations, so if there's nobody there to bring them up to speed, it's now taking my child's teacher away from the true lecture to try to pull them along too. I have seen it with my own eyes, that it is truly beneficial to have another body in there, to get up, and when the kid's coming in, to be able to say, "This is what we're doing." And lots of time, I call it to the kids, "Break it down," and break it down, what we're doing, even if it's comparing. Sometimes they need to know. They need to have a little special comparing. If the teacher is responsible for doing that for all students, when is she going to have time to just teach, just lecture? I'm concerned because I have a third grader. Right now is where it has to count. Third, fourth, fifth grade, it has to count. She has to get into the habit of being a good student. And I feel if we don't do something now, we're gonna lose out. And I, and I'm not saying that I don't appreciate special ed. And I'm also not saying that I'm coming in, "Oh, she wants to do this, and she wants to take this out, and she wants to..." Don't misread me. What I'm saying is, I want to make it better. It's not working the way that it's going right now. And I want to make it better, and I know that I can, just simply figuring out a way. The kids that are coming out of the classrooms, how about leaving them in their special ed classroom as like a homeroom, assigned room? They stay there, they get their services, and when they come back to the classrooms, they stay there. They don't go. They don't get, come out. They don't need anything else. They're there for specials. They're there for the fun things that happen with their, their classmates. Right now, going out, there's one, one child that I see in my mind as I'm talking to you. He neanders through the hallway. It takes him maybe ten minutes to get to where he's going. I have watched him take his time coming back to the classroom, because he doesn't really want to be in the classroom when he gets back there, because he doesn't know what's going on during that period of time. So I'm thinking, if we keep them, or figure out a way to have maybe two, three special ed home-assigned classrooms, the kids get their services from that classroom, then, when they're released for, for say, two or three hours of a day, that will stop all the traffic coming and going, all the, all the interruptions. "Mrs. so-and-so, could you please send so-and-so down?" "Mrs. such-and..." I'll tell you, if I were a teacher, I would be completely annoyed at what, at what's expected of me these days in a classroom. It's like, when do they get to teach? I, I'm really, really concerned about that, because my child needs to be taught. I'm not expecting you to teach her everything, because I supplement. And if you know me, then you know that I do that. I'm saying, speaking for the parents who are not there, and if I were to tell them at a grassroots level, and say, "Listen, you need to come in. You need to see this, or you need to speak up. You need to ask for services," even if, if my child, I feel I'm at the point, I want to tell some of the parents of the special ed students, "You need to make this different. This is not, do you know how much time your kid is in the hallway, going and coming and back and forth?" If they were there just ten minutes of each day, that's a half an hour that they could get servicing. Why move them back and forth? Figure out a way to schedule them, where they stay and get their services, and when they go back to the classroom, they're in the classroom, and everybody's happy. I'm certain, just think about a substitute that comes. And I have seen that too. They don't know where the kid's going, or what's gonna happen. They're relying on the kid to come back to say, "Oh, I have to go to so-and-so at such-and-such a time. Oh, I have to go to this." The kids are just moving. It's way too much. And I think I can handle things like that, but if I see it, I know teachers are feeling it. I know the students are feeling it. And I know for my child, the disruption is way too much. So when I started this thought, I was at first annoyed. How come my kid's education has to be disrupted like this? How come I get... And then I thought about it, wait a minute, she's still doing okay. She's still, you know, top of her class. She's still doing, but I could probably get more out of her if I stopped all of her distractions from happening. She has best friends that get pulled out. I don't want her to be detached from them. I just want it to kind of, oohsah, just, just stop. Everybody go where you need to go, and get back to what you need to do. But we have to figure this out. And like I said, I figured out, just layman, put them in a classroom, all students that need to move, put them in a classroom, sort of like a homeroom, assigned room. They stay there for all of their services that they need during the day, and then you release them back to the grade level assigned room. I also see students who are in third grade and can't read. I don't see how you wouldn't see that that would be troubling to a child left in that classroom during the rest of the day, when they're, they usually have, when they don't have services. They're there, not knowing. Even if a teacher hands out a, a little special paper, it could say, "Color the ball red." And I'm telling you, because I have seen this, that child doesn't know because they can't read, "Color the ball red." My portion, when I am in the building and I can volunteer, I'm able to say, "This is the color red. Look at the cramp. Red. Let's sound it out." But you need another person to do that. The teacher can't stop to do that each time and every day, in two, three hours of a day. So I'm addressing you to say, if there's any funding anywhere around, try to figure out a way to bring the para back to the classroom, or to bring the students to a slower schedule of moving about the building. Figure it out. Figure out something, or otherwise, I'm gonna be back again saying, "My child's education is being disrupted. My child does it now." But I'm not, I'm not there yet. And I, and I've mentioned this to you before. I'm not angry about it. I'm annoyed, but I understand, because I've been there. I understand there's things that have to happen. Money has to be spent on this. We don't have that kind of money. But in the interim, the students are losing. All of the students are losing. Everyone could go up, up a grade level if we stabilize. I'm certain of it. I see it all the time, and no one can tell me differently. I've worked with some of these kids. They want to show me. They show me things when they're doing, when they, I go, "Oh, you're not gonna do that." I act like I'm gonna be disappointed if they don't read it. They come back and they show me. They're not reading well, but they show me they want to read. That's in the classroom, in the back of the room, while the teacher's doing the lecture. So they're not, they're not getting that fair shake of being in a classroom and getting the full, uh, uh, experience of the classroom. They're just there, and that's not fair. And so, I'm just saying to you, please, try to figure out a way to fix it. If you want to call, or if you want to come and see, I encourage you to come, and just sit with me and see what I do when I do. I mean, I give out hugs because I'm a grandma. I, I can do that sort of thing. I'm not employed by the school, so when I see a kid not quite themselves, I can say, "What's wrong? Oh, you need a hug or..." But really, what it is, is, I can't read. I don't know what's going on. I don't know where I'm supposed to be. I don't know what's, and that look, that deer in the headlights, that can't, that can't be. And I'm just saying, please, check it out. And if you see me again, it's because we didn't do anything.
Okay, thank you. Um, Lorraine's the only person who's signed up. Is there anybody else who wants to address public participation? Okay, um, I know that we have, uh, an attorney, uh, waiting with a meter running, so I'm gonna, uh, ask that we go into executive session, uh, to, uh, talk about a settlement before we, um, come back to the regular order. So, it should be the board, the superintendent, Dr. Tucker, and the attorney. Who should go into executive session?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and we're back. Next on the agenda is the superintendent's report.
Thank you, and I'm gonna make you strain your necks a little bit too now. I'm sorry. It was no good place to put us, but I do want to point out, um, this was our first week of going live. Um, this was City Hall. Uh, these are our primed higher students who are now mobile. Um, actually, you can't really see the cart from this picture, but they have a rolling cart. They are serving breakfast items. Um, this was when they're, this Mr. Tadio off there probably checking his cell phone. Um, and so, and they also came on our side too. So they, they travel with their carts. Um, they have coffee. They have cinnamon muffins. You name it, they had it. Breakfast bagels. And, um, they are working the cart. And today, when I was at Slade, we had our Pathways students. Am I giving you guys, put new names to things, you're blowing me away. Our Pathway students were also, there's a lot of professional earning going on at Slade right now, so they know how to capitalize on that. And they walked in with a food cart as well. And, um, and it's for fundraising, but it's, um, we're really excited. Their uniforms look beautiful. So that's one thing I just wanted to showcase this week. They will be there on a weekly basis, um, selling breakfast. Um, so if you're ever in, in, in there. The money is going towards their programming, I'm assuming, Donna. I'm looking to you, because I didn't talk to Dory about that part. Um, but it, it's gonna go probably towards programming and funding. I can find that out for you exactly, Miss Laye. So that's the first. Now I'm gonna ask, Mr. Prokop, can you just put up the map, because I thought I would show you more, um, on our manufacturing, engineering, and technology academy. It should be right up there. Do you see it?
Manufacturing industry. Its legacy...
No worries.
...place in today's economy is at the forefront. Transforming the entire world beyond our...
Yeah, you can go right into the Google Drive.
...opportunities available here at home offer real...
So while he's doing that, I'll talk to you a little bit. Um, just a couple of the highlights. I guess a long talk. So if you want, oh, you see it?
In the state of Connecticut, there's more than thirty... And you have no idea how difficult it is to...
Three trial runs before you came. I mean, it worked all three times. Just saying.
GM and Technology Academy at New Britain. To make a rewarding career in manufacturing...
Can you just slide it back now, once you get it up there?
I wish I had one. When I was in high school, it was...
We can watch it from there, I think, and then we can get it right.
Academy does what the students here, it's have machines that... ...offer possible internships, and then be able to...
If you could just turn the volume down, and I'll...
...here as well to see, hey, how do I make? You know, a future job, a future career.
We're trying to talk. Okay, I'll just go through. Um, I just, we're, we're keeping our eye on the number of new students, uh, that are arriving from Puerto Rico as a result of the earthquakes. Um, and it's, I, I do actually have the table for you. We have a total now of nineteen students who have arrived. Um, there is a chart for you to see where they're coming, and it's similar to our last time. The majority, um, and again, total of nineteen, um, with the majority attending Smalley in Pulaski. So, Ms. Robles, four students have arrived for you. At Smalley, we have five. We did send out a, um, a survey to our families to ask if they anticipated new family coming, would they be staying, and that sort of thing. Um, let's see if we remember what the results were. Fifty-three people responded to the survey as of, uh, the first. Uh, forty-three of the families said in anticipation, uh, will people be coming and staying. Forty-three said no. Four said yes. Uh, for those coming, is, is the stay expected to be permanent or temporary? And so we're just trying to keep our, our finger on it that way. Um, our family school liaisons in each building, um, have been alerted, and are, uh, will be notifying those families as well, the new nineteen that came, to make sure that they're hooked up to any services they need, um, in town. So that's that. Um... Okay, let's try. I got one thing done. That was good.
Its legacy is at the core of New Britain's history as the hardware city, but its place in today's economy is at the forefront of innovation and opportunity. And while makers are transforming the entire world beyond our city, state, and nation's borders, the opportunities available here at home offer realistic, high-demand, high-paying, and satisfying careers in manufacturing.
There's a tremendous demand for those types of people that split set in manufacturing. Got a solid, our hands-on problem solver is one of the key attributes of being very, very successful in manufacturing today. In the state of Connecticut, there's more than thirteen thousand open jobs in manufacturing. We just can't get enough people. And you have no idea how difficult it is, it's, it's from a business perspective, that you want to continue to grow your business, but you don't have the people and the right skills to be able to grow. The Manufacturing Academy at New Britain High School, we're planning on building the absolute best place for kids to come through and learn manufacturing skills, so they can hit the ground running with the line top workplaces that are just near New Britain and the surrounding towns.
The Manufacturing, Engineering, and Technology Academy at New Britain High School provides the real-world education and training to make a rewarding career in manufacturing a reality.
You know, it, it's a great program here for students. One of the things I wish I had more, when I was in high school, was having more hands-on classes like this. So one of the things that the Manufacturing, Engineering, and Technology Academy does for the students here, is have machines that students can physically work on, along with being able to see them out in possible internships, and then be able to actually work on in class, work on with teachers, work on with peers as well, to see, hey, how do I make a project? work on with peers as well to see, hey, how do I make a project, how do I do things? And then create that connection between, you know, a future job, a future career, and what they're learning here in high school. A lot of students don't see that connection of, what am I doing here in high school and how does it relate to my future?
They learn by doing in a classroom that replicates a real-world manufacturing workplace with hands-on projects that meet real-world manufacturing demand.
I think it's really beneficial that we have manual machines at New Britain High School, because you get to learn all those skills before you even work on a CNC. Pretty exciting knowing that I'm special part and other companies and stuff that I do. Being a engineer ago, you know, an engineer is probably thirty-five, forty years old. And think of a separate part, the high-tech, that's pretty exciting. If it goes up to the real world, and you get to use it on a helicopter, on a jet engine, it's actually functioning in the real world, in the army, or just in your day-to-day life.
When Joe came to us, he was a pretty reserved chap. They trained him, he came in, he asked the right questions. And you see him now, and he's out on the floor, um, talking with guys that are, you know, forty, fifty, sixty years old with multiple years of experience under their belts. But he's working with them to make sure that our parts perform to the specs. Well, the industry itself, as we all know, is very busy. That's why a lot of these schools are going out and creating these programs. Problem is a shortage of labor. Uh, that's why these programs, uh, at high school, New Britain High School, they're so fundamentally important. We have an aging workforce, and this industry is going to be busy for the next fifteen to twenty-five years.
We've got a handful of graduates here from New Britain High School, Central Connecticut State University, very young, innovative students that have come through through the path and educated our senior machinists on the new stuff that's going on. And where the senior machinists are teaching the other students their trade. So it's been, uh, a nice collaboration with our machinists, engineers here, and the new students that are coming on. And it's been a great fit with some of these students from New Britain High. And it's very important to keep our core manufacturing here in the Central Connecticut area.
The opportunities are here to join the pipeline to change their lives as they change the world.
So, wanted to show you some of the progress. You'll see some of the items this evening that we're purchasing continues to, um, to fill our academies with the, with the tools that we need and the, um, just preparing those rooms. Um, that's basically, you can read the rest of it. I, I, I put enough in here for you to read the other things. I, I will say, um, the one thing that I did want to make you aware of, it's under operations and it's changes to special education transportation to begin February twenty-fourth. And I put a timeline there for you to follow. You can see exactly, so if a family member calls you and has a concern, keep, keep this with you too. But there is a timeline. We have our case managers, our social workers calling all the families whose transportation is impacted, and we have a pretty detailed timeline there. So, I mean, that's just for you to have as a reference and, and give them some assurance that, that you understood. And the reason was really to accommodate, we had demographic movement and some new programs that opened within the district, and we had to make a shift. Um, and we, we are actually reducing some of the busing, which is, which is a good thing too. Um, but it will impact students' bus number and/or their drop-off time and pickup. So, um, I just wanted to give you an idea of how we are communicating to families through that. It's been a busy month, a lot of good things are happening. Um, and as always, if you have any questions, let me know. But I think I put a lot in there. We're being recognized with our Wilson trainer. We have, uh, they're actually coming in because, like I'd stated, we have one of fourteen in the nation that is our in-house Wilson trainer. So we're pretty excited about that and the upcoming work with that. And, that is it.
Okay, um, tomorrow there's a community conversation.
Oh, yes, thank you. It's at OIC, North Street, New Britain, five-thirty. Thank you, I had a look at Sandra for that. So, we, we had a really nice turnout last month. We had over fifty people. I would say that, that, that was our biggest event yet. Fifty folks came, um, and they actually had a major voice on the calendar for next year, which you'll be getting next week. We actually took all of the, uh, the group's consensus on when the start date would be, um, around the Christmas break, um, and those different things. And so you'll see that calendar come through. Tomorrow night's conversation is to review the changes that we will be proposing to you as far as the calendar goes. And then we're really looking at that transition time. Um, Ms. Sims had asked for, Dr. Sims had asked for, um, at our last curriculum meeting, I believe it was? I think it was. Um, just talking about those numbers of students who, who go from middle school to the high school. What are those numbers? Who are those students, from DeLoreto, from Halls, from each of those? And, um, while we have a pretty comprehensive internal plan for transition from fifth to sixth, eighth to ninth, we still see percentages of our students not going to New Britain High School. So tomorrow night's conversation is really just three or four bulleted questions. We work in groups to talk to them specifically about if, why, why aren't your friends coming here? What, what is it? What can we be doing different, better? Just starting to discuss that with our families to see if we can start getting info around that too. So that's tomorrow night, five-thirty, great dinner always. Our culinary students, um, from OIC actually, um, put on a really nice dinner, and it's just a good hour and a half of conversation. So, everyone's welcome.
All right, so now we'll move to committee reports.
Okay, we met and discussed two main things. One of them is on our consent agenda today, which is regarding the software for credit recovery and, um, kind of a couple of alternate programs. The, the software that we currently use is not going to be available anymore, so we don't have a choice but to look for another software. And so, um, the new software, which, like I said, is on our agenda for today, will cost very similarly to the old one and has been reviewed to meet all our needs. Um, it's a little bit more in the first year because we have to train our teachers, obviously, with a new program, which I think is very important. Um, and then the other thing we discussed is, as Nancy explained, I had requested data. Um, Jeff Prokop was able to provide the last five years of our middle school students separated by school and who ends up going to New Britain High School. And so, we did see some trends of students in specialized programs kind of being less likely to go to New Britain High School. Um, and I think we all agreed that rather than sort of speculating and having great adult ideas on how to fix that, we should find out from the families what's going on. So, um, that's where it was agreed that that would be the topic of tomorrow's community conversation, um, as well as, uh, Nancy mentioned, there will be an implementation of a, of sort of an exit survey. When people go request, in order to take their child to another district or magnet district or whatever, you have to go request, um, records. And so we should be asking, why are you going where you're going? If it's not that I'm moving out of state or something of the sort. And that way, with that data, we can make some decisions on continuing the, the comprehensive program that they do have now to sort of entice students to go to New Britain High and show off all that is available there, but to target a little bit more of those populations.
How were the parents notified of the community about the conversation? Were there?
We, we do connected calls. We have it on our Facebook page, um, we Twitter it out, so. And I think word of mouth too, because, you know, we've been doing this stuff for a year and a half, and it grows every month a little bit, so.
Okay, and policy?
Uh, nothing to report.
Okay. Person, personnel?
Yep, personnel. Uh, we did a few things. We did, uh, manager of the school safety and security, which is going to be a new position, uh, which is, will cover all the schools and the staff that works in, in that area. We also did behavior support system for small classroom settings. And also one for the huge expulsion site. And then we hired two pair, or put on the agenda for two pair educators for key people to be hired.
Okay, and, um, finance net. Gail's not here to report, but we have a couple of things that we'll deal with in new business. And then we have some donations to accept and a bid waiver to approve. All right, uh, let's move on to, are there any board reports?
Um, I had the opportunity, Superintendent Sarah asked if I'd be able to attend a meeting at the Hartford, the UConn Hartford campus regarding the use of indigenous.
That was used.
That was me.
Michelle Cuzbagwell was telling me a guy from New Britain went, but she couldn't remember the name or description.
That's fair. I am pretty nondescript. But, uh, the, a number of the, a number of the Connecticut tribes are looking to, uh, two things, looking to consider things like, uh, the state of Maine recently adopted a ban on the use of tribal iconography and names and related names for sports teams. And they're also looking at what was done last legislative station, uh, session with, uh, Black and Latino studies and looking to bolster the inclusion of indigenous people into the curriculum. It's already in there in a, in a way, but it's not very heavily emphasized. Um, so there's just a working meeting talking about strategies for that and what people's thoughts and concerns were. Um, a lot of it was prompted by what happened out in, um, Killingley. What happened in Killingley. And, you know, so, it was a productive meeting and possible future steps for us to take as a board later on.
Okay. So now we have, are there any other board reports? Okay. Uh, let's move on to the presentation on tier-three intervention programs.
So, while they're coming up, I just want you, if you'll recall, we spent a full year last year, a task force of admins and all introduce themselves on, uh, creating a, an intervention. And we gave a presentation, I think it was at, in June, I'm pretty sure. In June, uh, we wanted it to be developmentally appropriate for both regular and special education students, um, with a specific focus on reshaping behaviors. And, um, it was not to be a place, but more a service to move students in, help them learn, and go back to or, or go to whatever's the most appropriate. And so, I thought it would be important that they, and they'll introduce themselves, come up and give us an update from September till now.
Good evening, I'm Nicole Garsis, the supervisor of the elementary program, Lincoln Small Classroom Setting.
Janice Pena, one of the assistant principals at Slade Middle School.
I'm Rosa Ortiz, one of the assistant principals at Pulaski Middle School.
I'm killing you, I know, I'm sorry. Do we want to go sit out there? Are you guys all right with this?
Go ahead.
Okay.
Um, so I put this together, this is just a flow chart of how we're seeing the students respond to the setting. Uh, for elementary school, the parents do consent to being put into the setting because they are, um, actually moving to a different location. Um, so if the students do respond to the intervention, um, the plan is to gradually extend their time in a larger classroom setting. So we begin them at Lincoln Elementary School. Um, and as they respond and continue to do well in that setting, we work on transitioning them back to their home school, um, in the larger classroom setting. Um, if they aren't responding to the intervention, we're finding, um, it's really diagnostic to see what each child needs, um, whether they need a 504 plan, if we need to further dive into their behaviors with our functional behavior assessment or behavior intervention plan. Um, some of our students, we create safety plans. Um, if attendance is an issue, we have the family school liaison collaborating with the families. Um, we have referral to external providers, which is Clinberg, or School Based Health Center, um, to provide those clinical supports if we see that the child is not responding. Um, after all of those supports are put into place in that planning, um, if they continue to not respond, we do a referral to special education and then determine the appropriate placement for them. So this is a snapshot of how Lincoln Small Classroom Setting implements the life and learning competencies of self-awareness, self-management, social efficacy, and academic efficacy. Um, every morning, we do a daily mindful mo- moment. Um, some of our teachers do a restorative circle every morning to start the day to make the kids feel welcomed and part of the community. Um, at the end of the day, we do a reflection on how their day went, and we conference, um, with goals moving forward. Use the zones of regulation, trauma-informed and restorative practices. Um, every day, we teach, explicitly teach social skills. Um, our social worker, we have a part-time social worker who pushes into each classroom daily and does a social-emotional lesson. Um, as a part of our program component, we meet every six weeks on each student. Uh, we invite the homeschool principal, the families, um, my full team, so the teacher, social worker, and myself, and we review, um, each child's progress and plan next steps for them, um, instructionally and behaviorally. We use a specialized classroom management system through the Boystown model, which is, um, kind of a, it's a program that some of the other specialized programs use. Um, it's a point sheet and motivation system for the students. And then, again, at those six-week meetings that we have, the partnership meetings, um, we're planning, we're using data to plan next steps for each child, um, in their small group instruction. So, I did, um, an eighty-day analysis to see the impact of what Lincoln Small Classroom Setting is having on the rest of the, um, elementary schools within the district. So comparing, um, the first eighty days of school last year to the first eighty days of school this year, um, we found that there's, there was thirty-nine less incidents of out-of-school suspension, twenty-two more incidents of in-school suspension, um, which kind of leads me to believe that the behaviors are less extreme in the elementary schools, and a total of four hundred and eight less administrative managed behavioral referrals. Um, so I was kind of happy to see that, the impact there, because the day-to-day, um, it's not an easy job, and my staff would, you know, be the first to tell you, when I presented this data to them, they were, you know, they were gleaming, because it is a tough day-to-day job, but we are truly making an impact. The next comparison that I did was our Lincoln students. I looked at their behavioral data from last year to this year. Um, and we have a sixty-four percent reduction in behavioral incidents. So we went from one-seventy-four to sixty-two referrals, um, and a sixty-eight percent reduction in administrative managed behavior referrals.
What are the ages?
Um, so it's first to fifth grade, grades one through five.
How long is each, um, when you decide whether or not they're responding to the interventions, how long do you give the children to adapt to whatever?
So, in, in our first year, um, we were kind of working those details out. Um, we do meet every six weeks on each child. So at that point, the, the team makes a decision as to when. I would have to say this, in the first year, um, I didn't make decisions very fast to transition kids out. I, I waited at least like two cycles of the meetings, um, just to make sure that the kids were truly ready, because I also wanted to build the relationship with the Lincoln teachers. Um, just knowing that we were sending students who were truly ready, um, we didn't really want them to regress. We just wanted to make sure that they got the, the self-management skills that they needed before transitioning them.
When, um, doing things such as the zones of regulation and restorative practices and so forth, how much, especially the zones of regulation, when a child leaves your program and, um, is integrated back into the whole classroom, does that follow and do the teachers in the classroom use the zones continually with that child and with other children in the classroom?
Um, there was a professional development at NBU presenting the zones of regulation, kind of a general overview for teachers to kind of follow through with that process. But I think, um, there's definitely more room to grow there. Um, you know, the students at, in our setting, they get the zones of regulation every day with the social worker. Um, so it's a more in-depth, um, they're probably a little bit more knowledgeable than the teachers that they might be receiving as they transition out.
And do the young children, especially like the grades one, truly understand all their zones and are able to orally communicate where they are in their regulation?
Um, they're, they're at this point using the colors, um, to identify their feelings and emotions. Um, and kind of, we've, we've been working on like the size of their problems. So they're able to identify their. So they're able to identify their emotions through the color system and also the size of their problem. That way, they know how to, you know, they can kind of regulate, is your, is it a level five problem, or is it a level one problem, and how are we going to solve? And also, the specialized classroom management kind of brings that, the problem-solving piece in. So whenever there is a minor incident, we have the paraprofessional working directly with the students to kind of problem-solve, okay, this happened, it's okay to make a mistake, what are we going to do next time in order to prevent this? So it kind of all brings it in together.
Do you have, I don't know if you have data here on this, but how many students are mainstreamed back into the classroom and stay with learning all the techniques that they've learned in a small group and keeping them with them? And how many have returned back to?
I do have a graph that's coming on now.
Awesome, thank you.
So this graph right here is just the visual of the referral data for our students at the Small Classroom Setting and their reduction from last year to this year. This is, I took an analysis of the discipline data by incident, so out-of-school suspensions from last year to this year, and this could, this is just by incident, so I didn't count the number of days they were suspended, just how many occurrences it was. So last year, there were six occurrences of out-of-school suspension, this year four, last year four in-school suspensions, and this year one. This is a snapshot of the attendance data. So the red graph is the chronically absent students, so there was five last year, this year we have two, and then severely chronically absent is the same. It's actually not the same student, but we do have, we recently have a family school liaison that has been assigned to all of the students with the attendance issues. This is just a snapshot of the demographic data of the students currently in the, in the Small Classroom Setting. So we have a majority male students, we have two female students, and you can see the breakdown of students receiving special education services, as well as ethnicity. This is the visual of exactly where our students are currently falling. So right now, we have eight students that are in a larger classroom setting at Lincoln and have stayed there. So they're at different portions of their transition. We have, out of those eight, we have three that are fully mainstreamed, and then the other five, I think there's two that are half-day, and then the other three are just beginning their transition, where it's about one classroom period. They do the morning meeting in a classroom period. We have one student who we've transferred back to their home school. There's two special cases that I've kind of identified. The parents have really liked the Small Classroom Setting for their child, it's kind of like the first time that their student is seeing success, so they really don't want them to leave the Small Classroom Setting. They're responding well, and they've asked us, can they stay? I mean, this is the first time that they're doing well academically and behaviorally. Why do we need to further the transitions? And one of, it happens to be the older grade, so one of the students is a fourth grader and one's a fifth grader. We have four students right now who are responding to Small Classroom Setting, just haven't, with our behavior management system, there's different levels, and in order for them to transition, they need to get to the, what is called the progress level. So they haven't quite reached it yet, they're close, so they just need a little bit more time, and then we'll be transitioning them to larger classes at Lincoln. We have six students that we've referred to special education due to behavioral issues, just not responding to the program, and three, we've found the root cause of their behaviors were really academics. We haven't seen any behavioral issues in the Small Classroom Setting, just the low-functioning academics at this point. So to sum up, Lincoln Small Classroom Setting, the positives that we see, the smaller teacher-to-student ratio, we have a decrease in behavioral referrals and disciplinary actions, an improvement in academics and attendance, we're improving family and school partnerships, we've received a lot of positive feedback from the students and families. I have to say, I'm blessed with the team that I have right now, the team dynamic is really great in the Small Classroom Setting. Whenever there's a minor issue or anything, the team really comes together and problem-solves to do its best for the kids. The paraprofessional engagement, our paras actually attend, every Wednesday morning, we do our staff meetings, and this is something that they've committed to, to kind of learn more about the kids and better the program, so they attend those staff meetings with us. The challenges that we are having are the transitions. So as they, as the students start to transition, we pair them up with a paraprofessional to start, and then we gradually release that, because we don't really want to send them out. Some of the kids have anxiety issues or, you know, fear of, you know, going into that larger setting. So we're finding that when we do send our paraprofessional out for support, the classrooms are just left with the teacher, and at times, we have some issues that we need staff to respond to. So we've kind of, it's a difficult balance to hold, where, you know, I'm helping respond to a lot of the behaviors, and it's, it could be, you know, if there's three to four students that might be escalated at once, we're challenged with just having enough staff to give the student that, you know, the intense intervention that they need, to kind of guide them through and de-escalate. So that kind of goes into the staffing, just responding to the students in crisis. We've had a turnover with our four or five classroom with the teachers, we've gone through two teachers at this point, and our, our staff kind of came together and decided, we really don't want to move forward with someone who doesn't have the full training that we received at, in the summer. We did a full week before all of the other teachers, that we were really feeling that it's essential for them to have, to be able to work with this population. And just the year-one trial and error of figuring out our processes and exactly how, because there's a lot of moving parts.
Can I just add too, and I think, you know, the one thing that I do want to go on the record as saying is, you know, you're walking a fine line always, because our goal here was to improve engagement, right? Get our, to get our kiddos engaged at the elementary level. And also help the other buildings with working, working with the students that we have. So the challenge, and you're gracious not to put it, is that, you know, when it's time for, for the little ones to reintegrate, we struggle with staff sometimes saying, no, we like the way it is. And we said, but that wasn't, it's not a place, it's a service. And the service is always to get our students in the best place possible, and if we say they're ready, we have to have faith as staff that they're ready. And one of the really important things is when, every six weeks when we review these cases, the building administrator from the home school has to be at the table as well, because they have to hear what worked, so that they take it back, they communicate well to their teachers, this is what's working. So it's, it's a challenge, being in a new home, Lincoln is a new home, and there are some staff that, it's, 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 it's learning. It's learning that they're ready to go. We have to be open and say, in that restorative mind, come on back in. And that's a challenge.
How is this demographic data about Lincoln being used to inform, I would think, the greater school community and how they operate, as well as your program? And I can tell you right off, obviously, it's vast majority male. I don't know the numbers off the top of my head, but I'm familiar with Lincoln, and 26.9% black students is very disproportionate. So, so, you know, just looking at it, it looks like black males are overrepresented, as they tend to be in all disciplinary type issues, and most of these students are not special education students. So how is this data?
Going to be communicated?
Looked at and used to inform the school at large and equity lens, things like that?
Sure. So I've, every month, Nancy Sarah comes and we do a check-in meeting, and we've talked specifically about a plan of action for this. And this whole team here has agreed to kind of go on the road with Nancy Sarah and present some of this data, and just kind of ask for their feedback. I know the administrators are going through the culturally responsive training, so kind of bringing that in. You know, we're doing our part to, to learn the culturally responsive ways and methods, and kind of just presenting it to the staff. And I've given, I've kind of been open with Nancy Sarah about certain interactions that I've had with staff members, and I've, I've had to call them out on, you know, accepting all children. So I'm willing to kind of take names off of that and, and share some quotes as we go and share it to the schools, you know, like, I didn't know this was one of your kids. What do you mean by that? What do you mean, one of your kids? We're all New Britain kids. So kind of just pushing back and challenging some of the staff members on that. So our plan is to kind of go out to each of the school with Nancy and present the data and kind of ask their plan, and present some of those real examples.
So I usually, oh, I was just going to, I just, I usually go each year and go to each staff and get feedback for how the year is going, but we talked about it, and we said it's really important that we bring this out to all the staff. So we have something to say this year in a small group to all staff, and basically, so what are we going to do about it, right? And so that's our next step. So thanks, Nicole.
Can you just speak to the referral? How does, how does a child get to your program? I want to know what is happening in that child's day-to-day, in the classroom, in the school, before they reach you? Like, how do they reach you?
So there's a student assistance form that they need to fill out, and it has specific guidelines as to what interventions need to be tried before they come to me, whether it's an informal behavior plan with a point sheet or something like that, that they have to implement and actually adjust two to three times.
So three cycles?
Mm-hmm.
With kind of the SRBI model?
Yep.
Yes.
The building principal presents too. It's not the teacher. The principal's got to come forward.
The principals will submit a packet. It has to have the data, and we review it. Nancy Sarah, Amy Anderson, some of the admin teams that we do, our monthly check-in meetings, we bring it to the table, and we determine, did they do enough? If not, we're sending it back.
How many have you had to send out?
Two. But we haven't had many. I've had, I think we have seven students on the waiting list, but I haven't received the data packets for them. We received three packets of data and had to send two back.
And you may know this answer, students who are in this program, if they continue through a summer school program with us, do they have access to all the strategies that they've had throughout the year during their summer school program?
Yes. So the answer is yes, and that, when we were developing, and then the architects are out in the audience who sat with me and worked every single week last year, it is critical that their successful recipe is communicated to the principal, and the principal communicates it to the teacher. Because oftentimes, you send a, and again, and, and I think Nicole has it, we waited a couple of cycles before we even thought about putting them back out there, because we want to make sure that they feel good about where they are and who they are, before we send them out. And then it's closely monitoring. And when they go back, and this is really hard for teachers, when the students go back to their home school, they are Tier Three students. They're not Tier One, they're Tier Three, and they come with, here's what we found to be so successful with this little one, this is what you must do, right? And so it's, it's making sure that our admins are keeping a tight handle on, is staff around that student following with fidelity the, the plan that we put in place that is yielding success?
One last question, I think, sorry. When we're referring to special ed for behavior or academics, I'm more concerned about the behavior piece. Are we also, you mentioned family liaisons, are they also communicating with parents concerning checking with the pediatrician, going the extra mile, and maybe there's a sensory processing issue going on here, the, you know, and so forth? Are we making those connections?
At every six-week meeting, I have my social worker kind of, and we collaborate with Clinberg and CHC, and my goal this year was to get as many of our students in, that are enrolled in Small Classroom Setting, into some kind of outside service for that support. They're with us for a reason, they do need that extra support, so I have the social worker work closely with the outside agencies to kind of collaborate that we, you know, we've signed releases to be able to talk directly to them, and we've, we've done a lot of that piece with the families.
Awesome, thank you. We have the middle schools now too. I don't have any questions about middle school.
Good evening all. I am the daykeeper, if you will, for our tiered intervention team at Slade. Our team is made up of sixth, seventh, and eighth grade students, their classes, and the data that we collected was from last year, on the students with the attendance concerns, referral, and their academic progress. So once we identify the group of students within Slade, we then worked on creating a smaller learning community for them. So with a focus on, you know, the strong teacher-student, you know, parent relationships, social skills that are explicitly identified and taught, the smaller class size in each class in sixth grade, right now currently, we have 11 students, and in seventh grade, we have seven students, and in eighth grade, we have nine students in that homeroom, and this is the group that they travel to all their classes together. We've designated a BSA to the team. There's a esteemed teacher that on E days, based on our cycle, on E days and F days, Christopher Godfrey, which is with us tonight, he supports the team, he's available, he's a little bit of coaching, guidance, and more of a colleague to support the teachers on the team as well. An ongoing PD, also from Boystown at the middle school level, is referred to us. This is a, kind of a snapshot of our, the actual team, the students on the team, it's fluid. So this is the number of students and where the students went. So looking at the first one, there was one referral to a more restricted environment, and also a referral to special ed, and this was within the building. There was one student following the color graph referral, requiring specific interventions also. So he came from a different team, and he was referred to come to the Tier Three team, the tiered intervention team. This process, as I'll piggyback on what Nicole was saying, the process was at a sit meeting, we call it the Student Intervention Team, where a concern of a student with a file, where there has been, you know, the student's profile has been researched, they are looking at the history, they're looking at last year's, the year before, are there community agencies involved, just everything that the child has had, to put a profile together to kind of inform our next steps with, with the student. There were two students referred to special ed for behavior concerns. So those students went on the special ed route, if you will, with PBT One. There were two students that were referred to a more restricted environment as well, which was outside of the building. So the level of behavior and the level of need within the building, we couldn't offer. So the students were referred out, as well as the special ed route. Now, these are gen ed kids. Then there was two other students, also, who were special education students already, but they were referred to a more restricted environment within the building, which is our self-contained, we call it our Bridges Program. There was two students that transitioned, they were sped students on Tier Three, but we transitioned them to another team, because they could also receive the specialized services on another team. There was two students that transitioned from Tier Three to Tier Two on the same team. So the team is made up of one sixth grade, two seventh grade, one being the Tier Three classroom, and two eighth grades, one being the eighth grade, Tier Three classroom. So from the Tier Three, the student transitioned. So from the tier-three, the student transitioned to the tier-two within the same team. So the tier-three classroom had eight students, so they went to a classroom that had 28 students, which is same team, same teachers. Then there was two, okay, no, the last one, there was three students that transitioned from the tier-three back to tier-one, and that is in a different team in the mainstream, you know, general classes, general schedule. And are currently very successful independently transitioned.
And I'm just gonna say, in the interest of time, and even for Rosa, when you come up, too, if we can just do a general, you know, here's, here's how, you know, not go through, and I, you know, we sit and we go through every child that we want, but just to give the general overview, I think would be, because they don't know the kids like we do. Are you guys, is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
This is the demographics of the team. So you have your gender, the breakdown, larger, you know, number of males.
Mm-hmm.
You have the Janet students versus SPED students, and then their ethnicity as well, which is, again, tells a story of who are, where the needs are, and it also pinpoints, given their behaviors, it also pinpoints and it helps us plan more and really look at it, because it's like a mirror of what is going on. This is our attendance breakdown, total students in, so comparing 1819 school year to 1920. So as you could see, but there's a little bit of an explanation at the bottom, this is an area that still and continues in the middle school that requires close attention. It requires some digging, it requires some pounding the pavement, it just requires a lot of time to see. But with, there's 11 students out of the 20 students now, as you could read at the bottom, that are currently chronic. There are six students chronic, that were chronic last year, that are not chronic this year to date. I anticipate they'll continue to move in that direction. However, there are six students that are chronic that were not chronic last year. Now, three out of these six students are in eighth grade and we just hired a new teacher. She started January 7th. So prior to that, the students went through two teachers. So there wasn't a permanent, there was no stability in that tier-three, eighth-grade class. Next slide.
Thank you.
This breaks down our referrals. And this is only this, this population, the students on the tiered six, seven, and eight. So in 1819, as you could see, there were less referrals, right, almost half. And this year, there are almost double with the referrals with this population, with this population with the tiered intervention classrooms. What, as, you know, you keep looking at data and the numbers are the numbers. I find that we are very focused and there's a lens on the students, there's a lot of documentation to be able to make decisions for them. Also, you know, we, I took the breakdown of the referrals, of who was writing the referrals, and when I broke it down, you know, teacher one was only there one month, teacher two worked for one month, and then the third teacher had resigned in December. So that group, that combination had significantly increased more referrals. It just wasn't a good match. It didn't mean they were bad teachers. It just was not a good match for the kids and for the purpose of why we designed the classrooms the way we did. And then the other teachers, to date, they totaled 62 referrals. And the other referrals that add up to the 239 referrals come from UA, so from their specials. There's some challenges in that area as well.
Thank you, Janice.
This is our OSS ISS, the rest of the school compared to the actual students on those three classrooms. And as you could see, the tier-three students are getting less suspensions and less ISS still compared to the rest of the school, which really tells me a couple of things, right, that there is still a need in the rest of the school to meet these types of behaviors that require suspensions at this point. But it also tells me that, as a gatekeeper, I'm keeping the team and those classrooms tight so that, you know, the teachers have time, because there's a lot of collection of data. There's a lot of, there's interventions that are monitored and I appraise them for the data and the collection that they've done because for, for all their work, we were, we've been able to move kids fluidly through the classrooms effectively and successfully.
Thank you, Janice.
Our last slide just goes over positives and challenges. Lots of positives. I find that my biggest challenge, I think we've discussed, is the second one, really, is the non-team members. I, I don't find that the rest of the, or someone who's not a team member understands still the purpose of the team and to be able to not view it as a behavioral program, if you will, and not, and also accept the students who have transitioned back, because that's been a little pushback, because they have their own profile of the students. But I think that's just gonna take time.
Thank you. Well, can we hold the question until after Rosa goes, because she's gonna give similar? Are you okay with that?
Yeah.
I was just trying to be fair with the time. Thank you, thank you, Janice.
Different, same school?
No, different. Pulaski's slide.
Okay, so Pulaski and SLADE are pretty similar with the exception of, at Pulaski, we, our classes are seventh and eighth grade only. We have one of seventh, one of eighth. And it is a two-person team, excuse me. The students were identified for this team based on last year's attendance, discipline, academic progress, interventions. Moving forward for, for the rest of this year and, and beyond, we're also gonna look at kid talk data information as well as our SIT protocol data to identify students that need a higher level of intervention within our voting. The focus is still very similar, it's building strong teacher and student relationships. We use the restorative practices to try to support students in decision-making, helping them with empathy as well as being more engaged in the classroom. Our social skills instruction is through safe and healthy schools curriculum. We have smaller class sizes with more individualized adult attention. We also have a behavior support assistant, and, excuse me, and that person is there to reinforce conflict resolution and social skills, as well as supporting our students who exit to go into the mainstream. She is the, the person identified to support once our students are exited and they have a base to go to. This is our attendance data. For us, last year, 2018, 2019, we had six students that were severely chronically absent, and this year we have two. We've had 10 students that were chronically absent, and this year we have three. So we've made a big impact on attendance. This next slide is our demographics. We're a little bit different from SLADE as we have 15 female and 10 male. Our ethnicity is, as, we have 20 Hispanic students, two black, three white, and one Asian. And, sorry, I'm losing my voice. Seventeen students are, do not receive special education services, while eight of them do and have IEDs. This is our whole school, this is the referral.
Isn't that crazy?
So last year, my goodness, sorry. I'm getting bronchitis, that's why. Last year, we had 1,599 total incidents in our building. This year, we have 767. This is the 80-day mark. This is not only a reflection of our tier-three, it's also a reflection of us improving our practices within our building. So it's a combination, but it's, we're heading in the right direction. Last year, we had 170 out-of-school suspensions, this year we have 122. 91 ISS last year and this year, 40. This is our breakdown of where our students are. We started the year with 38 students, we currently have 25. And then that's where they are. Four students transferred out, we had five move to a higher level of support, one currently mainstream, partially mainstream, four no longer meeting the criteria, they're fully mainstream and have not returned, and then three that are ready to be mainstreamed. And the struggle that we're having is students not wanting to be mainstreamed. Because, again, they've been very successful, they, they enjoy the smaller class and having more adult support, but we will be working on that.
We all will be, right? That's the same, it's a common.
Yes, it's a common. Okay, and then our last slide is also some of the positives and challenges. So we have, positives are smaller teacher-to-student ratio, a decrease in discipline referrals school-wide, improvement in, in the students' academics and attendance, and increase of adult support. And our students are part of our school community, so that's very big for us. The challenges are similar, the mind shift of adult behavior, it's no longer just provide students with a consequence, it's, we need to teach students how to change their behavior. Consequences don't always change behavior. We have to work with our students and identify what errors they're making in their own behavior so therefore they don't continue making the same mistakes. We need to continue having professional development to better engage our students and build stronger relationships with them. And our year one of trial and error, still trying to improve our practices, still tweaking the program. But overall, it's been very successful for the students and that's really where, you know, we want to put our efforts into.
Really, Nancy, as a colleague or you work on the team, you've observed some of the things going on, would you like to share?
So as Ms. Pinia was putting together the data, some of the story that the data doesn't always show or doesn't tell is when, I worked with the students prior to being in this intervention and I've worked very closely with them in the intervention. And when you had them dispersed in the school, they were the student, when the teacher, it's just the visual, the, the students are entering your classroom and then these students are coming in and you get that little bit of an anxiety in your stomach because you really don't know how the day's gonna wind. And, you know, the students are very perceptive, you know, and these are great teachers, but you can still feel that. And it's a much different setting when they're walking into these classes, they're fist-bumping the teachers, they're getting hugs, and you see the students actually engaged in some of the activities and stuff that I see them doing, picking up pencils and doing work and stuff because they have that relationship with the teacher and the intervention is so much focused for them. So I just wanted to speak to that a little bit because, you know, when you're looking at the pie charts and the data, it's, there's happy kids that are behind some of that and in, it's, it's good to, it's, it's a good feeling and it's good to see that. So, and these are kids that traditionally, we, it's more difficult in a large classroom to be able to, to get that happiness or that engagement, so.
Thank you.
Okay. Could I just get some clarification around SLADE in sixth grade? My understanding is, you said 11 students are?
Yep, in the homeroom.
Okay, so.
And they travel.
Are these students that came in already with cycles that happened in fifth grade? And because we would only be in like the second cycle going on the third cycle, or were they identified in sixth grade as needing this program?
They were identified at the end of last year, last summer, when we were putting together, based on their referrals that we had, John Taylor pulled from their fifth grade, and some recommendations came from elementary principals. Because elementary was also working on creating a smaller learning community for the kids. So that, that's, so our data points were the referrals, the attendance, and the achievement. And the achievement was the benchmark that students were taking last year that were district-wide benchmarks for the learning piece. And did a pretty good job of identifying some of those kids that really needed that setting to appropriate. One student transitioned out of that, of that homeroom to a Janet, to another team within the building. So our cycles are every six days. So during MBU, they talk about the students because their focus is data, is interventions, and are these interventions working? Because the interventions are in every class, throughout their classes, all day long.
And I'm referring to an SRBI cycle of six to eight weeks.
Okay. And for Pulaski, we do not...
You have none.
No.
So why is that?
Because Pulaski went to two man teams for sixth grade this year, which SLADE does not. So all of our sixth graders are within two academic core teachers.
Okay, any other questions?
Thank you, Nancy.
I just wanted to make a comment that I appreciate hearing particularly from Mrs. Ortiz from Pulaski, the perspective of looking at the entire building practice when you're looking at this data and sort of having, you know, the students be part of the, the school community and the important conversation of, yeah, adult perspective and things like that. Thank you.
Thank you. They worked really hard at this, so I can't thank you. And for the architects out there, too.
So moving on to old business.
At the request of the administration, I'm gonna ask that we postpone item 4A indefinitely. They haven't decided on a date that they'd like to recommend yet because we may have some inclement weather. And rather than have it come back every month, if we can postpone it indefinitely, we can just bring it back when we're ready to move forward on it. So a motion to postpone item 4A indefinitely.
All right. Is there a second?
A second. I just, I, I thought the discussion was that because the state thing is, once you've said it, it doesn't matter how many snow days we have, then it's not an issue, so why are we continuing to wait for snow days?
Can I have Mr. Foreigner?
Possibilities.
Because we still have to do a hundred and eighty days. Right now, our last day is a Friday. If we have three or four more snow days, we don't want graduation to actually happen before the 900th of the upcoming state exams. So when that up against the hard, as much as the state law says you can set a date, technically, the people in your seniors are supposed to come back for those, to get to the 180 days even the day before. So, so we're of the opinion that it doesn't make sense to set a date if, if students are never coming back and if there's a possibility that the majority of exams will take place after graduation, just, there's some issues. We feel that our way.
Moving on to our consent agenda.
We need to vote on that.
Oh, okay, we need to vote on postponing the old business.
So we have a seconded motion. Any further conversation? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Any extensions? Okay, motion carries. Okay, moving on to the consent agenda. Is there anything that anyone wants to take off of the consent agenda? Is there anything that anyone wants to take off of the consent agenda?
Not hearing anything, we will move on to. Do we need to do a vote? No, okay, we'll move on to new business. All right, so the first item is discussing legal settlement, settlement? We did that one already. That was the first one, yes. Okay, I thought so. Okay, finance, bid waiver.
Motion to approve a bid waiver for guided reading books in the amount of fourteen-thousand-one-hundred-and-fourteen dollars. All sounds set.
Okay, we have a motion, second in motion. Any conversation, discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to Item C.
Motion to approve a purchase order for the replacement of gymnasium floor system at Northland Elementary in the amount of sixty-one thousand three hundred and thirty dollars.
Second.
Okay, we have a second in motion. Questions, discussion?
I know that this had gone out, or did we receive multiple quotes for this or multiple bids?
Mr. King, can you answer? Mr. Moore is not here tonight. He is out sick. He has to go look. Mr. Moore's out sick.
I know that we had the winning bid on the packet. I'm just curious if there had been any others.
Do you want to circle back to that, or?
Wait on it.
I'm, I'm fine, I'm fine going for it. I was just curious.
All right, so we have a second in motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Okay, motion carries. Next.
Motion to approve a purchase order and bid waiver for equipment and technology from the CTE programs in academics at New Bern High School in the amount of one hundred and thirty-three thousand six hundred and ninety-two dollars eighty cents.
Is there a second?
Second.
Questions, discussion?
I just want to say I looked through the technology and based on the video that we saw earlier, I think it's great that we're getting more of this stuff in for the program. Like, I almost wish I could go back to high school.
And this is funded through the Perkins Grant Commissioners Network and the fund at the Community Foundation. All right. Further questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries. Okay, moving on to the next one.
Motion to approve a contract between the Consolidated Street School District of New Bern and the Inter-American University of Puerto Rico.
Second.
Okay, we have, there was no committee review of this. Someone want to explain what this is?
Ms. Pottem, you can explain.
So that did not go to committee review because we were going back and forth with the university and talking to them about setting up the MOU, and I wanted to get it in this board meeting opposed to the next board meeting because we already have a student teaching, a student teacher in waiting to be placed at Chamberlain Elementary School. And I didn't want her to suffer because we couldn't get to coordinate our times in talking with the university, the International American University of Puerto Rico. So that's why I pushed the board memo through for this board meeting.
Okay, and so this is to get us more teachers from Puerto Rico?
Yes, yeah, it's, it's very exciting. And so we are working on, this is the one, our first one, and we're working to get more student teachers from the University of Puerto Rico to come and do their student teaching here in New Bern. Yes.
For you to, Ms. Superintendent, Chair, or Ms. Pottem, was this reviewed by our attorneys?
Oh, several times. And that's why it took so long. We, this has been in the making since November, and there was just a lot of legalities between Puerto Rico and, you know, CSDMB. So I just, I really just wanted to push it through, and I apologize for not getting it to you sooner. I mean, I do go through the proper channels, I mean. All right?
So, so the first, the first student teacher that we're getting is going to what elementary?
Chamberlain Elementary. And I think Mr. Rizalvar has put her in a second-grade class with a bilingual para, full-time para in that second-grade class because, you know, we just want to make it work for a student teacher. This is our first go-around with it, and we just want to make sure that everything is perfect.
Thank you.
All right. So we have a second in motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries. All right, move on to the next one.
Do you want to pull that?
Okay, so we're going to pull Item F and move on to Item G. Okay, so this is approving a new position for behavioral support at the small classroom setting in Lincoln. Do you want to?
Talk about it.
Make a motion first?
Okay, I move that we approve the new position at Lincoln School for small classroom setting.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second in motion. Questions or discussion? Okay, seen none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries. All right, let's move on to the next one.
This behavioral support assistant for a new exposure site, and I move that we approve.
Second.
Okay, a second in motion. Any discussion, question, yes?
Just a question, where the site, where this is physically going to locate, be located? It was mentioned in the memo that it was formerly at Portside, or?
It's Pathways and Derrills.
It's going to be a Pathways and Derrills. We're going to move, locate kids over to that program once, once the contract is finalized. Right now, they have the, they have a draft contract, and the attorneys are looking over it now. So we'll need an additional, we'll need a VSA to support the teacher. We're moving a teacher over from New Bern High School who will be supporting his children, special ed teacher, and this will augment that support.
And we'll also be contracting with the services of Pathways, too, to do some co-teaching. So the fee will be a portion for their staff and a portion for rental of their facility.
And for those of you who aren't familiar with Pathways, it's an after-school program, so they've got space that's available during the school day.
And their real focus is pregnancy prevention.
Yes, right.
And all that goes with it.
So any further questions about this proposal? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extension? Okay, motion carries. Moving on to the next one, the next page.
I move that we approve the new position for a para educator for the key classroom at Lincoln Elementary School.
Second.
Okay, second in motion. Any questions or discussion?
You want to?
This is actually, you, this board already approved an RBT, Registered Behavioral Tech, for this classroom. We decided we're going to go with a para rather than that, so this is actually just replacing that position. It's actually actually a savings to the district, and we're going to be providing that individual with support and training in AB and practices.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Yeah, so, why the choice from, to move from the?
Well, originally, we weren't, the goal, we were hoping to be able to put RBTs in all the classrooms, all our key classrooms. We looked at what other districts were doing, and we feel with the appropriate trained paras, we can achieve the same result.
When are they receiving this training?
Well, we're going to, right now, we're starting onboarding, well, we have training right now for all our paras in the afternoon in our classrooms, in our key classrooms. So Wednesday afternoons, there's an early dismissal, and there's training. But we're also going to be implementing training now for all onboarding of paras who come on board, whether they're permanent or are subs who come in. So we've, we've, the district uses, you know, safe schools, so onboarding for all our employees, they have to watch videos on bloodborne pathogens and all that. They have a program for special education, which we purchased this year, and so it provides training videos in all areas of special education, including AB, behavior, you start practices, et cetera. So that's going to be for when paras come on board now, that will be part of their training before they even work with a child.
All right. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries. All right, and the next one.
I move we approve a new position for a para educator for the key classroom at Slade, New Bern.
Second.
Second motion.
Would you like me to speak to this?
Yeah.
Yeah, this is actually a student who was outplaced at a therapeutic school, and this student already had a para in that program. So in addition to the support, he had a one-to-one, a full-time adult support in addition to the staffing in that school. Then we brought the student back into the district, okay? And we worked a couple of months with him without the para, very transparent as part of the PPT process, but we determined that he still needed that level of support. So we're actually saving money by bringing the child back into the district, but we found after working with him for the past eight weeks or so that he does, he actually does need that level. So we're going to bring another para into the classroom, which will support him and others in the room as well.
Okay. Further questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Okay, and, and we have a board policy.
So this is actually just part of the, what, part of what we're required to do to continue to get the benefits we do for the school lunch program. So there are two things. I have to read through the actual text of all of this for both considerations. The first is the healthy school option that we're required to approve to be part of this program. The second is the exemption for food and beverage items, and that allows us that, so even though we're part of the healthy schools program, that we can still do things like concession stands and sporting games, at all sorts of after-school activities, et cetera. So I apologize because you really have to read the whole thing because the state's very picky about this. So I'd like to motion that pursuant to Connecticut General Statute, Section ten dash two-fifteen-F, the Board of Education or governing authority certifies that all food items offered for sale to students in the schools under its jurisdiction and not exempted from the Connecticut nutritional standards published by the Connecticut State Department of Education will comply with the Connecticut nutritional standards during the period of July first, 2020 through June thirtieth, 2021. This certification shall include all food offered for sale to students separately from reimbursable meals at all times and from all sources, including but not limited to school stores, vending machines, school cafeterias, culinary programs, and any fundraising activities on school premises sponsored by the school or non-school organizations and groups.
Okay, so we have a motion. Go, second?
Second.
Second, okay. Discussion, questions?
Can you put down layman's terms?
No.
I missed a few minutes.
Essentially, what it, what it is, is this is the language that the state uses that is certifying that, like, our school lunches are complying with the Connecticut nutritional standards. And we have to certify that, like, even things that are sold in school stores and other places available on school comply with that. And then the second piece is the only sort of exemptions that you can set up.
So this is nothing to do with the federal taking away the restrictions?
This has nothing to do with the new, with what's potentially happening at the federal government. No, this is nothing related to that.
Okay.
Yeah.
It might help to understand what the exemption is to understand what's going to be left after the exemption? So why don't you read that as well, and then we'll go back and consider them separately?
Yeah, that's, that's fair. So consideration two would be the exemption for food and beverage items. And I mean, I can read through, I can give the layman's terms, I'll read through it all when we make the motion. But essentially, what the exemption allows us to do is to have the sale of items that don't qualify, qualifies healthy foods. And they say, you know, the sale's in connection to an event that's, that's occurring at the end of the regular school day or on a weekend. So like our sports games, things like that. Musical, things like that. The sale of, you know, sale is at the location of the event, so it has to be sold at the event. The food and beverage items are not sold from a vending machine or school store, and that the event is an occurrence that involves more than just a regularly scheduled practice. So you can't, like, sell brownies at a musical rehearsal and say it's an event. But at the actual musical, musical night, you could.
So bake sales, et cetera?
You can have bake sales that exist outside of the school if they're in, if they're part of a larger event. So example, the bake sales that happen on Election Day, because we're not in school, those are perfectly allowed. A bake sale that happened at, like, a school dance, perfectly okay.
But if you just need to raise some money for your classroom trip, you can't do that.
Can't sell candy bars at school anymore.
No.
Yeah.
Nick, you may know this, and I.
I may have to defer.
This is, this exemption for certain, like, the home bake stuff, right? So it's still being, if it's a larger activity such as theater night and so forth, and we're selling it to patrons that are coming in who have children who are performing, et cetera, and we're selling it to children, they're still part of the school district. Are we liable for anything concerning who puts what in homemade baked stuff and allergens, et cetera?
I don't.
This scares me. As a parent of a child who has allergies and having on-school premises abilities for children to purchase baked items without it having labels, et cetera? I'm just saying, are we liable as, because it's still being housed in our school?
No, because it's not being sold by, by us, I would think.
But if a PTO sells it?
They're a separate organization. They're not an agent of the school district. PTOs aren't our employees, we're not, so if a PTO sells something at the school, it's, it's on them for that. If the school was selling it, then, you know.
And PTOs have their own insurance and all that stuff as well.
This is standard language we go about.
Yeah.
An example, if, if you don't adapt, if you go to the plug-in next year, baseball games next year, you're not going to be selling any of them. So when you have all the events coming in, it's a school event, you're not going to be selling them. So, you know, all schools have their need qualification during the school day, ask the healthy food for an event, you can sell the candy bar, so, and so, but during the day, it's a little different. This just gives you an exception to the rule at the end of the day for events.
Right. I understand that. My point is, there's a lot of stuff that's not labeled, and people are bringing in stuff. And I'm just concerned if it's, if it's associated with the school district, are we in any way liable if something were to happen?
Well, the things that we sell are, you know, that the district sells are labeled, right?
So I think the issue, that we got two separate issues here. That may be a question that we want to ask the attorneys, but for the purposes of this motion.
Go ahead, sell your stuff.
We need to pass the first one to continue to participate in the healthy foods thing that allows Whitsons to, more money for each school lunch so that they can provide healthier food for our kids. And then we need to have the exemption in the other half so that we don't tie our hands. When we, when I originally came on to the Wellness Committee, the big concern was, what about the?
the soccer league that uses our field on Saturdays that sells something? That's technically in violation of the first part, and we jeopardize that extra school funding, so we needed to pass the exemption. So, that's the context. Let's take the first one first. Any further discussion on the first paragraph that was already written, already read and moved? Yes. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Okay, now the second one. You want to read it formally?
Yep. I would like to move that the Board of Education or governing authority will allow the sale to students of food items that do not meet the Connecticut Nutritional Standards and beverages not listed in section 10-221Q of the Connecticut General Statutes, providing that the following conditions are met. One, the sale is in connection with an event occurring after the end of the regular school day or on the weekend. Two, the sale is at the location of the event. And three, the food and beverage items are not sold from a vending machine or school store. An event is an occurrence that involves more than just a regularly scheduled practice meeting or extracurricular activity. For example, soccer game school plays and interscholastic debates are events, but soccer prac, soccer, soccer practices, play rehearsals, and debate team meetings are not. The term regular school day is the period from midnight before to 30 minutes after the end of the official school day. Location means where the event is being held.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion, questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Okay, motion carries.
Motion, we, we had one item in our folder, motion to add an item to the agenda, which is a grant approval in the amount of $5,000 from the Community Foundation of Greater New Britain. So, motioning, motion to add that to the agenda.
Second.
All in favor of adding it to the agenda?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, okay.
Motion to approve the receipt of a grant in the amount of $5,000 from the Community Foundation of Greater New Britain.
Second.
Yep, okay.
Thanks. We were notified just before the Christmas break that there was an available grant through the Community Foundation funded by Mr. Schaler, who owns Schaler Auto World, and applied for it. The intent was for security improvements, and the high school campus is in need of a new golf cart. The current one we have is a early 2000s model where parts and capable repair people are not available any longer. They actually just want to take it from me. But this, this funding will go towards the purchase of a new golf cart for our campus safety team. The golf cart is used every day in the mornings for morning patrol and traffic assistance during our student drop-off. After-school days are for activities when they're covering soccer games or football games or baseball events down in the stadium. So during the day, gym classes are at the fields. We transport students who get injured, golf cart gets used on campus. I appreciate you, and we appreciate Mr. Schiller.
All right. Second in motion, or do we have a second? Yes, we do. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
If you have questions, oh, sorry.
So is this going to make it so that we definitely get it? Like, how much is the rest of it?
They just need a small more bit of money.
It's small.
It's, it's very small, and.
So is that a later to come item?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Okay.
It's, it's under the, it's under the purchase order bid threshold, so we're going to make that.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? All right, motion carries.
Motion to adjourn?
All right, second.